...thirteen, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of April twenty-second. Any comments, corrections for the minutes? I know in the Transportation Commission section, not a correction, but it's talking about bike parking downtown. And there's a new bike rack downtown, sitting in a parking stall at Cafe Artista.
Has anybody tried to put their bike in it?
It doesn't work well for me. I've tried.
It looks weird to me.
Yeah. You back it in and tie it sideways.
I just don't know how it works. It seems like a thing for a small car instead of a bike.
Anyway, that's an observation, not a correction. Anything else?
I'd move to approve.
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
All right. I've got a motion and a second. Wendy, we're just charging on here.
Sounds good.
All in favor of approving the minutes of April twenty-second is written. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Rebecca Staines. Thank you. Next up, correspondence. Anything from staff?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. Anything from the commission? Mike, I have a question. I've just kind of lost track. What is the status of the full revision of the zoning code? I know staff has been working on it, and we've seen various little pieces and stepwise. Any idea where we are on that whole process?
Last we had looked at was the subdivision code rewrite, which is part of that process. And it was being reviewed by Public Works Department. I believe that Bill's just gotten that back from Les a few weeks ago. And so I probably see that one moving forward here pretty shortly.
All right. Oh, commissioners, and for the benefit of the listening audience who acts quickly. Commissioners, I sent you an email late this afternoon, or actually during dinner, from the Clearwater Economic Development folks and beautiful downtown Lewiston folks. They are doing a tour of downtown lofts. If you want to see downtown living in loft spaces tomorrow at 5:30. So you'd find your email tonight, and you'd follow up quickly, and you would go on a free tour of lofts tomorrow downtown Lewiston.
Lofts in Lewiston.
Yep. Anyway.
Sounds good.
Transportation Commission meeting report. Do we know anything of that meeting? Joel's not here.
I don't. No, I wasn't at that.
Okay, no report. Open microphone. Looks like it will also be brief, so I will tell our listening audience that you are welcome to come down here and speak to us on any matter that is not pending currently on our agenda. Next up, number six, approval of relevant criteria and standards. Looks like we have to do two different actions here. A PUD action, and then we'll do the preliminary subdivision plat. And the way I figured out to find, figure out which ones of these are is look at the footer.
Oh, yeah, I was trying to find.
Because otherwise I get lost reading all the bold capitalized stuff.
Well, this is the condo one.
Right. This is the condo over on Prospect Place in Frontier Edition. And so the first one we're looking at is the Prospect Place Edition PUD. And I would be looking for a motion to recommend that to council. Is that correct, Mike?
Correct.
Okay. Make a motion. We recommend it to council.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rob. So now we have a motion and a second on the PUD reason statement.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Actually, you'd just be approving.
We're just approving, not recommending this to council.
Yeah, not recommending, just approving.
Because we've recommended this as the backing reason statement.
Correct. Now we're approving.
Okay. We're just approving the reason statement. Is that agreeable to you, Kurt?
Yeah.
And Rob?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. All in favor of approving the relevant criteria and standards for the planned unit development for the Prospect Place Editions. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Looks like that one passed unanimously. And we are now on to the preliminary subdivision plat.
I move to approve.
Is there a second for the approval of the preliminary subdivision plat?
Second.
Thank you, Nels. So, all in favor of approving the preliminary subdivision plat for Prospect Place Editions. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That one also looks unanimous. Ann? All right. Brings us to number seven. Public hearing, amendment of Title Four, Chapter Three, regarding off-street parking requirements for the UMC zoning district and providing for the amendment of off-street parking and window-opening requirements for the legacy crossing design guidelines.
Long sentence, long title.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Just to give you a little bit of background on legacy crossing, we had adopted that in two thousand and twelve by city council. Basically included three components, which were the urban-mixed commercial zoning district. So this is the underlying zoning district on the property that was, at the time, inserted into our zoning code. We previously not had the urban-mixed commercial zone within the code. And within that zone, it includes allowed uses. We have limitations on use section, as well as setbacks and building height requirements. And then we have legacy crossing design guidelines. And that's a document which addresses building architectural design, pedestrian facilities. Also includes streetscape, sidewalk design, and the design for public spaces and amenities within a certain area. And in order to utilize the design guidelines, we have to have a mechanism, and that mechanism's the overlay district for legacy crossing. And that's the area where the design guidelines are to be applied. And it establishes the organization and requirements of the review process, which comes to Planning and Zoning Commission whenever there's a new or a substantial improvement to any development within that overlay area. So within our zoning code, we have off-street parking requirements. And so that's found within Chapter Six. We have a table that goes through a lot of the uses that you encounter in the zoning districts, multifamily, so residential uses. We also have all range of commercial uses, which includes restaurants, bars, lounges. A lot of it's based on the square footage of the structure. It will determine how many parking spaces are required. But the majority of residential is defined by the number of bedrooms or units within the development. Well, we have a, this is maybe the only zoning district where we actually have a deviation for the off-street parking requirements. And so under our urban-mixed commercial zoning district, we have a different requirement for the off-street parking. And so the minimum required, we require fifty percent of the parking required by the table that was just on your previous screen. Or specified within any specified area plan or overlay zoning district where such plan or district specifically addresses off-street parking requirements. And we do address off-street parking within the legacy crossing design guides document. And so we do have a little bit of a conflict between those two things. One's referring you to the other document. And we also have, for the first time, a maximum allowed off-street parking, and that's just a hundred percent of what's required in the table that I had previously shown. So this brings us to the table within legacy crossing design guidelines, goes through the required off-street parking. We have residential uses, which require one stall per dwelling. Hotels require one stall per room. And then you have convention meeting space, which is at a fixed, one per ten seats, or one per each one hundred square feet of assembly space without fixed seating. And then for the rest of the other uses which are allowed within that zone, or within the overlay zone, office retail and other uses, there is no minimum parking specified for that. And so you're not required to provide any if you have any of those uses. And so the issue we run into is that within the legacy crossing design guidelines document, you have more of a ratio of parking required than the underlying urban-mixed commercial zone. So if you're looking at a studio or one-bedroom apartment, for instance, legacy crossing would require one stall, and the urban-mixed commercial zone would require point-six-two-five, which is half of the one-point-two-five requirement. And so for an area that we're focusing on, more urban, more walkable, just, you know, more friendly to pedestrians, we're requiring a higher parking rate than the underlying zoning district. And then, as well as two-bedroom apartment, the design guidelines would require one stall. And urban-mixed commercial is a little bit less than that, point-eight-seven-five. Doesn't look like much, but when you get to a twenty-studio apartment example, the design guidelines require twenty stalls, and urban-mixed commercial is little over half of what that would require at twelve-point-five stalls. And so we recognize that as a bit of an issue there, a disparity between those studio and two-bedroom apartments. So the draft ordinance and resolution before you today, what we're proposing to do is to go into the design guidelines and remove the table to avoid some of the conflicting language and the confusion, and just refer back to the underlying zoning district. So we would eliminate the entire table and insert a statement at the end there that off-street parking requirements are within the urban-mixed commercial zoning district. And then within the urban-mixed commercial zone, we'd be going into that limitation on use section and striking the current language with a fifty percent of the minimum parking required by the code. We'd be inserting the table from the design guidelines into this ordinance. And we'd also change residential uses to say fifty percent of the minimum parking required by this code. The other hotel, convention, meeting space, and office retail and other uses would remain the same as they currently exist within the design guidelines. And then we'd have to just, and this is just for clarification, for the maximum allowed off-street parking. This is just in reference to the table within Chapter Six, which goes through the master table of all the lists within the zoning code. And so just inserting a reference there to avoid confusion. And then that brings us to, when we were looking at the URA proposals, going through the design guidelines and utilizing that document, it was identified that some of the proposed projects were pretty close to the fifty percent minimum window-door opening requirement. And we have that requirement where for the bottom floor of developments that are adjacent to public street right-of-ways or major pedestrian corridors, the number of openings have to equal at least fifty percent of the wall area. And so the majority of the proposals met that requirement, but they were, we were just, you know, taken aback by how close they were to the fifty percent requirement. We also want to recognize that there is a wide range of other uses within legacy crossing other than retail. To assume that there's going to be retail on the bottom floor of every building that's constructed is probably unrealistic. And we have a lot of other uses within that zone that could potentially be on the bottom floor of buildings. And we also had the market study, which was conducted recently, that identified that residential and medical offices could potentially have a strong presence within the legacy crossing market. And so we'd reviewed this, the window area of ground-floor commercial and residential urban projects. So he brought numerous projects, and we had taken a look at those window areas on those facades in March and April of Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. And what we'd come up with was to have the fifty to eighty-five percent threshold remain. And so you'd have fifty to eighty-five percent of ground-floor facades. And then we'd specify of retail uses that front public streets and pedestrian ways should be occupied by windows and/or entry doors. And then we'd be inserting other language, which includes all those other uses. And so the ground-floor facades of all other uses that front public streets and pedestrian ways must have less than fifty percent window and/or entry door area when not located along primary activity centers in the legacy crossing overlay area. However, such ground-floor facade should not have less than thirty-five percent occupied by window and/or entry doors. So we'd allow them to go less than fifty percent when they're located away from those primary activity centers, but they couldn't go less than thirty-five percent of the wall area. And so with that, the commission action tonight is to conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, either recommend approval of the proposed ordinance, recommend approval with modifications, or recommend that the ordinance does not advance to city council. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mike?
Yeah. How are you defining, what was it, the... Primary activity centers?
Well, that would be reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission. So since you're in charge of reviewing any proposal that comes, usually, a primary activity center would be located on a street intersection. So if you have internal corridors or, you know, the internal areas of a block, then those generally would not be the primary activity centers. Maybe you say all along Sixth Street would be a primary activity center, but maybe it's a secondary street that's created within legacy crossing that's not really one of those primary activity centers. So I think it gives some flexibility when the commission reviews a proposal in order to make that determination whether, you know, you feel that it is an area that really needs to have some type of retail on the ground floor, or it's an area that could use some residential or some type of medical office on the ground floor. And so it'd really be up to the commission.
Yeah, so it'd be up to us, pretty much, to determine that and then hit them with the window standards as.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions for Mike?
Mike, have we, Bill done any research to see if we could find anybody else dealing with an issue like this? That would give us a hint? You know, I like the idea of the direction we're going, but this being such a small town, where you see, where we've seen other projects like this, it's usually in a place that has more important mass transit. To be able to handle people and be able to imagine that people aren't going to be as reliant on their car, you know? So you can, you know, you see in, I don't really know how Boise's dealt with it, but over in the Pearl District, you know, you have examples. And I know that people over there would buy condos and units that didn't have any parking. But then you'd, if you wanted a parking, you had to go out and go down the street and buy a stall for a certain amount of money. But I just wondered if we have anything to give us a little bit of guidance.
Well, within the legacy crossing document, it does speak of an approximate number of on-street parking spaces. So it's envisioned about three-hundred-and-forty would be created based upon the infrastructure, the road network that's envisioned within legacy crossing. And that's what the document speaks to, is that the majority of the parking would be created on-street. You know, this doesn't require, you know, it only limits you, this is only a minimum. So anybody doing a development within legacy crossing could always do whatever the maximum is within our code. And so the table, whatever the requirement is, they could certainly do that, which provides ample parking to patrons or residents of the development. But I think that in a lot of those larger areas, you're seeing people that have just chosen to give up a car, and it's, you know, maybe they don't have a parking requirement, and so it's causing a mode shift. And so instead of going down the street with their car to go shopping or go to the gym, they end up choosing public transportation, or walk, or buy your Zipcar, you know, those types of options. And so presumably, you know, adjacent to this area is downtown, and we don't have any parking requirements. And so you're not required, and it's just the public parking lots.
Not getting many people living downtown either, probably partially because of that and partially because we're a small town. And if you're just six minutes away from downtown, you're almost in the forest, you know? So it's not like being in a city.
Yeah, it was, that went along with that market study that was recently done. It indicated that the highest rents for apartments were actually downtown, in the McConnell Building. And so, you know, they were, and that's what generated a lot of the recommendations for residential and legacy crossing, where that, you know, higher-end studio apartments, there's really a market for that type of use. And it is, you know, the ones that are downtown above retail are fetching the highest in the city, so.
I would think maybe another safety valve in it is the way that the covered parking or garage parking doesn't count towards your maximum. So if the demand is there to the point, to that point, you know, it could be worth somebody's time to put in some parking, and there you are, selling the parking spot like you were just talking about. But I would be surprised if there was that much demand for the parking, just because it's so close to the middle of everything.
Well, there's also the option that you see in some cities, like San Francisco, of having permitted parking for the twelve hours during overnight hours. So if you live there, you get a permit, and you have to have a sticker, but then that adds to police costs to patrol it. But, you know, that's one option.
Yeah.
Other specific questions for Mike? So with that, I will open the public hearing and invite members of the public who are not present here in the room to come forward. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We can return to our deliberation. I think I struggle with, we ask a question of Mike, which turns into a discussion, which sprawls out over the starting of the public hearing, et cetera. But we're done with that. So is there more discussion? Or is, would someone like to make a motion to recommend to city council the approval of these amendments?
Yeah, I'd make the motion to recommend to city council to approve the amendments as written.
Nels, thank you. Any further discussion?
I would just say that as time passes and the area develops, we can always revisit the parking requirements if they're not working.
All right. No further discussion? Then all in favor of approving these amendments to Title Four, Chapter Three, regarding off-street parking and the window-opening requirements? And recommending those to city council? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Looks like that passed unanimously. Ann? So we're on to number eight, public hearing, amendment of Title Four, Chapter Three, Moscow City Code Regarding Outdoor Uses Within Commercial Zoning Districts.
So this first started in, at the end of last year. We had talked about it in Planning and Zoning Commission, and during the summer, the police department had received numerous complaints about a outdoor concert venue. And this property was on Third Street. It was on the edge of a central business district, and a residential zone was right, you know, abutting it to the north. And so they had started, really hadn't moved into the building, but started to conduct some type of music concerts on the outside within the large patio. And they were constantly getting noise complaints, specifically after ten o'clock at night. And so the police department had gone out there. We have mechanisms in place through the public nuisance noise prohibition. And so within the Title Ten, which is the police regulations, we define a number of public nuisances and require abatement of those. And so under that public nuisance noise prohibition, we go through loudspeakers, radios, phonographs, and amplifiers, and then restrict the permitting, playing, use, or operation of any radio-receiving set, musical instrument, phonograph, loudspeaker, sound amplifier, or other machine or device for the production or reproduction of sound in a manner to disturb the peace, quiet, or comfort of another person. So what we had, or the police department had done was go out there. And since somebody was obviously submitting a complaint on this, we also have noise source requirements within business institutional zoning districts at sixty-five decibels, as measured at the property line. And so they can go out there and make the use cease to exist with the first provision, but also measure the decibel, the decibels at the property line. They have a device that goes out there and measures those. And so they were told to close the concert down each time. I think it happened two or three times. In some instances, they have an amplified sound permit, which the city can issue to a responsible person. And that's in order to exceed the limitations of this chapter during specified hours. Probably rendezvous in the park and the fair are probably a couple candidates for that. So in fall last year, we had discussed the possibility of maybe regulating more outdoor uses in commercial zones. And at the time, the commission felt that the existing noise and nuisance ordinances were intended to address this type of activity. And there was no, really no change warranted to the zoning code at that time. But in review of all the zoning districts and the allowances of outdoor activities, the commission at the time did want to have staff take a look at expanding allowances for outdoor seating areas associated with restaurants. That was one area that we'd identified within neighborhood business, within the allowed uses, that outdoor seating isn't allowed for restaurants within that zone. And so we had done a comprehensive review of all of our commercial zones in the limitations on uses section, which usually shows up within each zone. And then central business, general business, and urban-mixed commercial, we don't have any enclosed building limitations. So a lot of these zones, or a few of them, have a requirement that all uses have to be conducted wholly or entirely within enclosed buildings. And so that's where they usually list that restriction is under the limitations on uses section. So CB, GB, and UMC, we don't have that restriction. RTO, we do. It says that all uses and related commercial activities have to be conducted wholly and entirely within enclosed buildings. And then it lists exemptions to that, which would be parking and loading areas, outdoor dining areas for eating and drinking establishments. I think there's probably only one, I think, allowed in RTO. And outdoor play areas necessary for daycare facilities. Motor business, the list is quite extensive. And I think that when we had just passed the recent temporary use ordinance, temporary uses should be added on there, as well as landscape supply yards. So we'll be adding a couple to that. This is just capturing, we already have outdoor dining areas for restaurants within motor business zone listed. So this is just capturing market garden, community garden, accessory garden, including retail uses. And so when we had passed our urban ag ordinance, we just didn't add this to the list of exempted outdoor uses. And so generally, when you're conducting one of those urban ag activities, you're probably going to be outside doing it. So just wanted to clean that up. And then in neighborhood business, right now, under our permitted principal uses and structures section, we have a, number two says retail uses, and then it also has personal services. Right now, it says conducted wholly within an enclosed building, including restaurants, but not limited to seller goods to the household consumer. And then it has some exclusions to the zoning district, which include automobiles, appliances, furniture, and other goods. And so what we'd be proposing to do would be to strike the wholly within an enclosed building portion of that, just so it says retail sales, personal services, including restaurants, and then goes on from there. What we'd have to do is... What we'd have to do is, uh, since we'd be striking that from that specific use, adding a, a section to the limitations on uses to, uh, make sure all the other uses within the zone were, uh, not encompassed within the, the wholly entirely within enclosed buildings. And so we'd be adding the market garden, uh, the urban ag, outdoor dining areas for restaurants, uh, that's really the substantive change here is, is allowing outdoor dining areas for restaurants, and then just cleaning up outdoor play areas for schools or daycares and parking and loading areas. And so, it's really all we're doing. Commission action tonight is to conduct a public hearing and upon consideration of testimony presented, uh, either approve, approve with modifications, or deny, uh, not recommended approval of the, the proposed ordinance. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mike? No questions? Okay. Um, I'll open the public hearing, invite testimony from the public regarding this. There's no public present, Ann, so I'll close the public hearing. Uh, and invite commissioners, do you have any discussion of this amendment to Title IV, Chapter III regarding outdoor uses? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recommend a city council the approval of this amendment to Title IV, Chapter III.
I still recommend.
Wendy, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Kurt. All in favor of recommending to council, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Looks like that passed, Ann. You're back up, Mike, number nine. Introduction of City of Moscow Flood Plane Ordinance Required Amendment.
So, um, within Title IV zoning code, Chapter V, we have a special flood hazard area requirements. And so, within the city of Moscow, we have, uh, two of those areas. We have Paradise Creek and we got the South Fork of the Palouse. And so, uh, these are hundred-year floodplains, which include, uh, floodways, hundred-year floodplain, as well as 500-year floodplain. So, shown in your map here is the hundred-year floodplain in blue, and so that'd be Paradise Creek, uh, that we've got flowing to the west of the, through the city. We've got a large area here that was actually, you know, it kind of balloons out in these areas, Joseph Street Fields, uh, somewhere in this vicinity. But you have a lot of the areas that, and this has been amended in 2013, and this is Paradise Creek, uh, that goes right next to Legacy Crossing. But there was a, a substantial amount of work that was done, uh, when the, the rec center was built, and they had it, had to daylight the creek. You can see it, it picks up, there's a cul- there's a large culvert here, and then it picks up on the other side there to the west. And so it's really, you know, after the, the contractor and the consultant had gone in and designed the, the creek channel, it had really contained it to just the channel itself. And part of that action had saved, uh, a number of downtown property owners from carrying flood insurance. And so, it had ballooned out similar to this, and it, it had reached all the way, uh, Almond Asbury, and actually properties on the west side of Main Street. And so it was a, a pretty big amendment to get those remapped and all the work that is done when, when we daylighted Paradise Creek. Um, and then we've got the South Fork. A lot of the property there is, is outside of, uh, the, the city limits. And so the city limits is, is outlined in orange. We've just got a small portion, Founds Industrial Park, Palouse River Drive is right here. And so, the reason I bring this up is, you have, this is all coming down from FEMA. And the regulations, we have a national flood insurance program, which everybody that's within the hundred-year floodplain gets a percentage off their flood insurance. And so if you have a mortgage and you're within this hundred-year floodplain, you're required to carry, uh, flood insurance, and it's backed by the, the federal government. It's a federal program, uh, the National Flood Insurance Program. And so, this affects a lot of people in Moscow, that's why it was so, so big to get that large portion, uh, removed from the downtown area. We'd probably gotten, you know, a hundred or so properties taken off, and so they're not required to, to have flood insurance, and actually, any flooding that happens in town, uh, is not going to reach those properties. And so, uh, that was a good thing. But every year, we have to go through, uh, community review with FEMA, and so we have to give them copies of our current, current ordinance, uh, we have to give them copies of, provide documentation that we're assisting people and, and letting them know if their property's located in or out of the floodplain, and advising them if his insurance is required. Um, and so we all, we have this Chapter V that allows us to administer, uh, the floodplain within the city. And so it, it lays out all the, uh, regulations, it, it goes through some methods for reducing flood loss, it defines the duties and responsibilities of the zoning floodplain administrator. So that would be basically our department, myself, Bill, or Becky, uh, in administering the floodplain. It also goes through appeals and variance process, uh, which is similar to our variance process for setbacks or building height, things of that nature. And the, the, really, the crux of it is that there's standards for new or substantial improvement to residential or non-residential construction. And so, anytime you build a new structure in town, if you're in the hundred-year floodplain, uh, you're required it to, to raise the lowest floor two feet above the base flood elevation. Base flood elevation is the elevation that the water's going to reach in the instance of a hundred-year event. So, one, one, one time every hundred years, uh, when we have one of those giant flood events, that's where the water, uh, that's the highest the water raises. And so, within the city of Moscow, typically you're required to go one foot above that base flood elevation, but here in the city, we go two feet above base flood elevation. And what that does is provide, uh, citizens that are required to carry flood insurance, it gives them a discount. So it's a 10, 15% off their annual premiums for flood insurance, 'cause we participate in, uh, that advanced program, and we do a bunch of extra documentation, uh, and we have policies in place, which gets us at that certain level for reduction. And so, every about 10 years, uh, we get reviewed by Idaho Department of Water Resources on behalf of FEMA for the National Flood Insurance Program. And so even though we're sending our ordinances, uh, or, or, or ordinance to FEMA every year for the community review, um, they're not really looking at the crux of it, we're just, they're just making sure that we have some type of floodplain ordinance in place. And so, this year was our lucky year, and we got contacted, uh, earlier this year, uh, by Idaho Department of Water Resources. And they said that they were conducting a floodplain ordinance review of the city, they'd asked for documents, uh, all the documents that we had regarding the floodplain. And our last review was in about 2004. So that was about the last time we probably updated our ordinance, I think it was around 2002. So, the last time we had a full-blown, uh, study of the whole city and remapping was April 22nd, 2002. And so it's probably adopted shortly after what we currently have. So we received a follow-up letter, which had identified that we've got some, some issues that we need to address, uh, some standards need to be updated or added to our ordinance. A lot of them had to deal with, uh, just updating to current language, so they've changed the language over the last 10 years. Um, we've got definitions that need to be updated, uh, we have some definitions that maybe need to be added, that aren't there right now. They don't like it when you have, uh, or use some terminology within your ordinance, but you don't provide a definition for what that terminology is, uh, in the beginning of the section. So we need to update the definitions, uh, and add some. We also have some state code references. Right now, we, we reference a, a section of the Local Land Use Planning Act within the Idaho State Code. It's no longer in that section, they've used, they've moved it to another, uh, section that, that deals with flood hazard requirements. And so, we just need the correct reference there, we have an issue with the correct map number, we have the correct map number for the city, but the county has a, a floodplain map that we've adopted as well, and we have a, a 1980 map on, on that for the number. But a lot of the other requirements deal with variance and appeal procedures. We just reference our current variance and appeal procedures within the city code that cover all those, um, you know, variances, the board of adjustment hears. And so, they have a specific set and a model ordinance they want us to follow, uh, in order to bring it in line with what the NFIP program requires. There's also a level of review for manufactured homes. We address them right now, and, and we just require them to go about a foot or two feet above base flood elevation, but within the new standards, they require them to be anchored down, and, uh, they have to be, I think, at least three feet, it's either three feet above the base flood elevation or substantial anchors, other than you would typically put on a mobile home. Usually have to anchor it down, but these are really heavy-duty anchors. And so you have those two options, they want us to, to update that. And then it, uh, one of the bigger issues has to deal with the lowest floor elevation. Right now in our ordinance, if you were to do a, if you were to do a substantial, um, investment in a property, what you would have to do is, if it's, if the, uh, if the renovation's going to be greater than 50% of the, the market value of the structure when you, when you start this substantial investment, uh, what you have to do is just elevate the addition. So if you're doing an addition, so a good example is, uh, the Nazarene Church on White Avenue that recently turned into a physical therapy business. And so they did that big addition on the west side, they qualified, um, for a, a substantial improvement, and so they were above 50% of the market value of the structure, and so that kicked in for them. They required to elevate the new addition, but they weren't required to go back in and elevate the whole structure. Current, the, the structure's probably about one foot below what it should be right now. So they were required to go in and cut every, you know, you have to, for your, if you have a crawl space, you have to cut openings so the water can come in, come out. And so, what these new standards are requiring is that any type of substantial improvement, the whole structure would have to be elevated. And so instead of just elevating the, the addition on, on the existing one, you'd have to go back in there, jack up the whole structure, and elevate it to the, to the right height. And so, I think what they're trying to do is, um, not promote development in the floodplain. I think it's the whole goal of the FEMA program is to try to get the least amount of development there possible, and I think that's probably just a repercussion of that, uh, whole goal of the, the program. And so, I don't think that, uh, you may have an issue with some type of improvements like that happening if they have to raise the whole structure. And so, uh, we're obviously going to have to comply with whatever FEMA and NFIP requires, uh, but we may be able to do some type of variance process where they may be able to do certain things to get around some of those requirements. And so, uh, we'll be reviewing that as part of this process, uh, when we look at it. So, that, that's really maybe the larger issue, the rest of the, uh, requirements are more just going in and updating to what the current NFIP code requires. So, they had said in their letter that they want amendments done by three months, so I don't think it's going to be, you know, it's not going to get done that fast, but we're going to have to work through it, and as long as we're, uh, working towards, uh, adoption, they'll work with us. So we'll have, you know, a longer time than that to get through it. But, I think the way we're going to proceed is, is as long as the commission's all right with it, uh, I'd start preparing a, a draft ordinance. They'd given us a checklist of everything that was insufficient, and I'll go through that, that as a starting point. Some of the things we have, like, they had, uh, hit us on subdivision regulations requiring that if it's, if you have over 50 lots, that you have to have a study done and mapped where the hundred-year floodplain is. Well, we already require that, it's just in our subdivision code, it's not in our floodplain code. So, some of those things we already have, and we just need to either probably reference them better, maybe they need to move into the floodplain and we can just reference it in the subdivision code, so, um, but we'll be looking at all of that. And so if the, the commission's all right, I can start drafting, uh, an ordinance, and we can start looking at some of these things and working through them, and then, um, hopefully satisfying, uh, IDWR and FEMA.
Okay. It sounds like we don't have much option.
I, I don't think so, no. I think it's pretty much set to-
Looking at the council member, do we have any option to not bring this forward? Okay. So we should direct staff, we should direct staff to do it.
Sure.
Um, it's interesting to think about the example you gave on White Avenue, the former Nazarene Church that's now the physical, Summit Physical Therapy or whatever. Um, had they been required to raise the whole structure as per what we're about to adopt, there's the potential that they would've said, "That just makes the whole thing too expensive." I mean, it's one thing to raise the new construction-
Yeah.
Okay, make the foundation taller, go for it, put in three steps. Um, but to have raised the whole structure, they might've said, "No, we won't go to that property," which would've left the church-
Yeah, we may not get reinvestment.
Right, right. Yeah, interesting implications.
That's really the biggest one, you know, it, uh, like I said, the rest of them are pretty minor, it's just bringing it in line with what, uh, the model ordinance is, so. But we'll, we'll research that.
John?
Just, uh, a point of order, uh, that was not the Nazarene Church.
Oh, sorry.
Jehovah's Witness, sorry.
Jehovah's Witness, sorry, okay, yes.
That makes sense.
To clarify-
To clarify, right.
Well, Mike, uh, go back to the plan, go back to the, uh, the beautiful plan you've drawn. Yeah, um, so did you see areas that you think are the most, are going to cause the most, um, stress to development? I mean, you know, the big, the big hunk over there on, off of Mountain View, at least some part of that is the playfield, a large part of it, as I think. That would be nice to see that playfield kind of shown there, just to give us a, a sense of scale. Uh, I, what I couldn't figure out is, as we've done some remediation through town and made that, apparently made the creek, you know, uh, more narrow, did that have an effect on the stuff upstream at all, or did it, uh, was there any effect, uh, when, when that, uh, 'cause I thought a good part of Legacy Crossing was in the floodplain at some point.
It was, and that, I, I'm sure it has had a substantial effect, but it hasn't been remapped. And so, what had occurred was that when the university had hired the consultant in order to, uh, do the trenching and, and really dig down deep to get a, a deep channel, uh, they had also hired the consultant to go back in and issue, uh, um, a letter of map revision, is what it's called, and, or a letter of map amendment. And so it would just amend, it really just amends this area. Originally, they were just intending on stopping about right here, but we said, the city ended up pitching in another seven, eight thousand for the consultant to go all the way down here to the south couplet, because if you saw, you know, what it was before, I think we were, our, the whole property was entirely within the floodplain there, and now we have it pretty much just contained to the channel itself. And so I'm sure that people will experience a lot less flooding within these areas, until you get to certain constrained points. So you have like Bridge Street up here, well, if you look under Bridge Street, that floods every time we have a large event, the reason that happens is, you have a honeycomb culvert underneath the thing. So instead of a large, you know, channel, a large culvert where all the water can flow and debris and everything, you have a honeycomb, there's like three or four of them right there under that bridge. And so what happens is, you have some type of debris, and it just gets clogged, and then it backs up, and then that's really, um, that kind of constrained point right there. But we don't have that many issues, uh, south of that. And so that's really the, one of the main points there. But, uh, there is, you know, quite a bit of flooding. We did have a Joseph Street project where we replaced, you may recall, I think it was about 2008, Joseph Street was closed for a while. Well, we- I think it was about 2008, Joseph Street was closed for a while. Well, we redid the culvert underneath the bridge there. And so, but the, the flood plain never got remapped. And so, I would imagine that the work that the university had done with their daylighting project, uh, as well as that project on Joseph Street that the city had done, is that it had probably, it doesn't look, it probably doesn't look like this if you were to remap it. It probably is a lot less of an area, but it just hasn't been remapped.
I'm just amazed with the new ability to do graphics. I mean, we've been looking at the, um, flood plain maps for, uh, years, but a little blue line, and then somehow this map, uh, brings your, focuses you a little bit more on it. And, and, of course, as we recall, those of us who were here in 97 and saw that particular flood, at least that brought realism. I, I think I was, up, up until that time, I was sort of, uh, couldn't really believe what the problem was. And then, next thing you know, it was, it was a problem. And we really had, uh, I couldn't, we, we were really blocked around town just a little bit, yeah. Though I, I'm, I'd, um, as weather, as the climate change happens, I was hoping maybe, uh, there'd be more blue in our world. Not that I want, uh, it seemed like that big, uh, the big lake there that you show, that's pretty much developed anyway. So, it really, there isn't much new to go over there, is there?
Yeah, the majority of that is the ball fields, and I wish I had an image. But, uh, yeah, and part of that project was the large swale that you see on the east side of Mountain View. So, we had done that remediation as well. And so, um, that's why it's so large, is because you have Joseph Street, you know, coming behind to the north and to the east of the ball fields. And then, you've got the large swale on the east side of Mountain View. So, that, that's why it's such a large area there. But I'd imagine, you know, it's not, it gets wet at certain times of year, the, the field does, but probably not what it was at, at one point in time.
Okay. So, we're going to instruct staff to work on all of this stuff.
Okay.
And it sounds like if, if it were remapped, which is a separate conversation, but if it were remapped, there might be some savings for some number of folks in terms of getting out of the flood zone.
There could be, yeah. It, uh, like I said, last time it was remapped was 2002. And I think we had done some work to the channel at that point in time, um, I think above Bridge Street and below Bridge Street. And so, probably wait until, uh, Bridge Street is maybe the culverts reconstructed under there, and then remap the whole area. It, it's pretty substantial a cost in order to go in and remap the whole flood plain again. So, um-
Just as a, uh, point of interest, my house is directly north across the creek of, uh, the Seventh Day Adventist Church. And my shop is in the flood plain, but my house isn't. And if your house is not, then you get the insurance rate of not being in the flood plain. And that was changed here a little while, a number of years ago, because for a while, I was paying exactly twice for my, uh, insurance, because the house was also in it. But the last time they did it, they moved the house out of the hundred-year flood plain and, uh, left the shop in it. The shop's got all my tools, eh?
That's all, they got all the good stuff, yeah.
Do you have any idea when the last hundred-year flood occurred? Was it the 97 or 95 or whenever?
Uh, yeah, it was about that, yeah. The big one at night.
Because they closed camp, I was on campus. I had to knock on my office door. What are you still doing here? You know, they evacuated campus and-
Yeah.
It was completely, it was completely enclosed.
Not that it was going to be flooding.
Well, my son ironically was with the Moscow swim team in, in the pool. And they were oblivious to it. I had to go get him and then get off, um, campus. And we watched the water go over Sixth Street, you know. And campus was like an island if, in a flood event and that, you know. But I was wondering, that was pretty severe. And I was wondering if that hit the 100-year mark.
I think it did, yeah.
Yeah.
What month was that? Um, in the spring, I guess, I suppose?
It was after a snow that melted really fast, right? Wasn't it?
New Year's event?
It wasn't New Year's, it was-
Yeah, it's that January, February snow. You know, we get snow, and then it warms up and it rains.
The creek flooded and-
Big mess. Okay. Uh, last, yes, thank you, Mike. Last item before we adjourn.
Hmm.
Yes, number nine and a half.
Adjournment is the next item.
Number nine and a half is a proposal, if you'll entertain it, to cancel our next meeting, May 27, such that we would meet again next time on June 10.
Hmm, sounds good.
You had a lot of plans? You really wanted to be here, May 27?
I can safely say I wasn't going to be here anyway, so, fine by me.
All right. So, Mike, uh, if you would just arrange such that, uh, our next meeting is the first in June.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, we are adjourned.